Welcome, everybody. I am calling to order this Board of Education meeting. It is Monday. Is that recording? Cool. It's Monday, June 6, 2022. It is 6:04. We are in the Nashua North Boardroom. Ms. Raymond, can you do the roll call? Yes, sorry. Everything's the opposite as usual. Ms. Darling.
Here.
Mr. Claffey.
Here.
Ms. Gilio. Oh, look at that. Ms. Gilio was just coming in. Okay. I'm here. Ms. Lampier is walking in as well. Ms. Brown.
Here.
Ms. Zeeem.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Okay. We also have Dr. McKinney and Dr. Sarfey. Did I see Mr. Donovan? I did. We don't have Ms. Carey. And then we have our friends from Fairgrounds. I know Mr. Harrington. And I don't know everybody else's names. I apologize. Ms. Hussey and Ms. Boden. Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. So we're going to head into the prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. However, before that, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the shooting that happened in Texas. I would actually like to do, it might be a little bit, since 1999, there have been 169 people who have been killed in school shootings. And I would like to have one second of silence for each one of those students. So this will be about two and a half minutes long. Let's head into the prayer, please. Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen. Ms. Johnson, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I just mention that Mr. Sahu and Mr. Rogers are also with us this evening? Yes, thank you. Oh, my gosh, this chair is so much shorter. Okay, I'll fix that in a second. First, on the agenda tonight, we have a presentation from Fairgrounds Elementary School. That was, again, I know Heather already said it, but Mr. Harrington, Ms. Hussey, and Ms. Boden. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for having us here tonight. We'll be brief, but we did want to highlight a couple of things at our school that we thought were important to share. Kind of given a little bit of a history, roughly about eight years ago, we were identified as a priority school, which is the CSI school, which we'd be now. And that gave us a lot of opportunities to take a real look at our school and what we could do to improve both academically and also to narrow opportunity gaps for our students. And when we began the process with our needs assessment, we first focused on some basic needs. We were the first school that brought Katie's Closet into Nashua and the first school to bring N68 Hours. But then we really wanted to find some of those opportunities that our students don't have coming from a higher poverty Title I school. And you'll see that a little bit in the two things that we chose to highlight tonight. There's a lot of other things that happen, but these are more unique to just our school. So we thought that would be important to share tonight. And that's why we said meaningful after-school and summer experiences. So the first piece that we wanted to talk about was our Blast Off Summer Program. So as you are familiar with Blast Off to Kindergarten, I'm not going to read the slides, per se. I'll just kind of go through it. You're familiar with Blast Off to Kindergarten. So Blast Off to Kindergarten actually began with our turnaround plan that we developed back in, I believe, 2013 or 14. And as part of turnaround principles we had at the time for redesigning the school day and having additional learning time, we looked at how can we have more time for students both after school and during the summer? So we began our own summer program that we called Blast Off to Summer at the beginning. Then it became Blast Off to Reading and Math and included incoming kindergarteners. That was something we really wanted to focus because as we tried to make catch-up growth for our students, we found that we're starting right at kindergarten and a lot of the basic skills that students would be expected to come to school with were lacking. So we collected data. We did teacher surveys. And our incoming kindergarteners benefited academically and socially compared to their peers. So taking that, and also when they came in, like I said here, was they get to know the homeschool, they practice using the bathroom, which is pretty significant, going through the lunch line, which is always a challenge, and meeting staffs that greet them in the fall. This particular program, we're fortunate enough to have a lot of our own staff. So it's nice when we have things like Power Scholars, which is also at our building. And then we have our Blast Off program where we have a lot of our own staff that stay and work during the summer, sometimes in different grades to mix it up. But it has them meet familiar faces for when they come in the fall as well. We had so much success from this that it expanded to the other four Title I schools, and it continues today. I put a little quote just from some of the research rationale that we used when writing the grant down the bottom, and just really focusing on the importance of summer months and academic skills in high-poverty schools and for at-risk students, which we do see at Fairgrounds Elementary. So Blast Off to Read and to Math, we have kept our grades 1 through 5 summer program going with Title I funding. We have students going into, we have the pre-K students. We also have students going into grades 1 through 5 as well. And we have roughly about 70 students that come each summer. They receive breakfast, lunch, recess time every day. And we use assessment data from end of the year assessments, running records, and we target that instruction with using Eureka math materials, guided reading. And also, we try to make it fun for students and make community connections and have some experiences for students that they may not experience otherwise. Having worked both in non-Title I schools with my time at Bicentennial and my time at Fairgrounds, it's pretty evident some of the opportunity gaps that students face in a Title I school. So having choices during the summer, this is a half-day program that runs four weeks. We have a full-day program with Power Scholars they can go to. We have ELL Summer School. We have ESY Summer School. The more opportunities we are creating for students, it's part of our philosophy that we think it's really important and really focusing on some of those opportunity gaps that our students all face, or most of them face, I should say. Some of the community visits, speakers come during, every week has a theme. There's a water theme. There's police theme, fire. So Fire Department and Police come every year. This helps us make connections with the community, has students learn and meet some of their community resources, and also helps us build relationships with parents. Meeting them before they even come in for kindergarten puts a lot of parents at ease and really helps with our community relations overall. And as you can see, we make it fun, too. There's a water theme one week, so there's water activities. So expanding not just some of the academic demands, but also having some fun and maybe experiencing things they wouldn't otherwise is something important. So overall, Blast Off Summer School has been a wonderful extension to our school community into the summers. It builds connections between students, teachers, and helps to prevent summer learning loss for many of our students. And I think when you combine this with some of the other things in the district that are offered, that are available to other schools or other Title I schools, it just really helps to create more choices and really address different academic needs for our different students. I'm going to let Mrs. Boden, who's one of our ELL teachers, talk a little bit about one of our after-school opportunities that we have. We're just kind of highlighting a couple of things that are unique to us. We do have more things that happen, like briefly mentioned during the summer or after school, but we wanted to keep it brief and focus on a couple of things that we thought were unique to us.
All right, I'll just slide this over. So Accelerated Academy is Kim Sarfey's baby that she handed over to me and Mr. Chopa and my wonderful colleague Sheila Shanard, who couldn't be here tonight. Me and her do it after school. And what it is, is we have ELL Homework Club, and that's separate. That's more for your newcomers who are struggling, who really need kind of that extra help with their homework. And then Accelerated Academy came around, and this was trying to target kind of your middle-of-the-road ELL student with some extracurricular kind of creative, fun content and skill-building. And one of the best things about it was we could just pick our own themes to teach different content areas. So we do math, we do writing, and we do science. And Sheila and I decided to do the arts. So we're using visual arts, dance, music, just some really fun stuff, just to teach kids a little extra, just a little extra boost with their writing. Those middle-of-the-road kids, when you just target a few of those skills, which sometimes we can't always see them because we're working with those newcomers who are so needy. So when we get these after school, it's just that extra bump that I've heard their teachers say, "Oh, they were talking about that experiment that you were doing. What were you guys doing?" And I'm like, "Well, let me tell you all about it." So we're really having such a blast. We're like in our third and last week and already sad it's going to be over, but it's turned out to be like such a wonderful little community we've built and such a wonderful program that I hope we get to keep it. It's really amazing. And we have some cool pictures, too.
She didn't refer to the name Picasso Peeps, which the kids really enjoy calling themselves. And I enjoy calling at the end of the day when they go there as well. And as you can see, they have a lot of fun. They do experiments. And it's just another example of that philosophy that we kind of developed when we went through our turnaround process of making sure that we're focusing on achievement gaps, but also opportunity gaps, and trying to expose students to different modalities when we're looking at how students learn and how they can improve as all-around academic and social learners. So it's a great example of one of the things that we're trying to do to extend learning and make our school a special place. And with that, I think that we're done.
Thank you so much. That's fantastic. I like how engaged the kids are in all of that, and I like how engaged you guys are. It's obviously a project that you guys put a lot into and get a lot out of. So thank you so much for that. We appreciate it. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Ms. Zeeem?
Yes. Yes, wonderful. So I do have a couple of questions. One, I'm sure all the kids want to do it. So do you have some kind of qual, like is it by their grade? Those kids who have academic, their grades aren't, where you want them to be, then those are the kids that get to do it?
For the summer school program?
Well, yes, for both. That'd actually be interesting.
So for the summer program, for Blast Off, we look at all the students and kind of see what makes most sense of them. So we spend a lot of time actually taking class lists and looking at which students, Power Scholars has a pretty specific profile of what kind of learner would go there. So we look at which students make sense there, which students maybe would be at ELL Summer School, ESY Extended Year for Special Ed, and then Blast Off, which we typically target students that maybe are a little further behind, one to two years behind. We have combined age levels with this, too, so there's flexibility. Sometimes we'll have a 1-2 class where we're focusing on certain skills. So when we put all those together, we do get a majority of students that want something during the summer. That's why it's really cool, because we have 70 students there. We have another, I think we have 80-something, or close to 89 spots for Power Scholars. Then you have ELL and ESY, too. So we end up having a lot of the students that would want something in the summer and who definitely need it be able to participate.
So I remember several years ago, before you were here, some of our summer programs, they weren't actually able to fill the classes, which I never could understand because it seems like such a sad thing when you have, like you're saying, you have so, so the 70 that you were talking about, is that what you can handle well? Do you know what I'm saying? Are you filling your classes, I guess?
Yeah, we usually do fill it up. Because we want to fill it up.
That's a good sign.
So we move, we have, we do get wait lists. There are people that sometimes want to go, and we kind of move and adjust what we're going to be teaching based on students that are coming, because we want to fill it up. So if we target the students that we think are the most important to be there, need to be there the most, but as it becomes that we don't have enough students, we kind of move out and expand the criteria to try to make sure we have as many kids take part as possible.
Well, thank you. I know there's so much need out there that I hate to see even one spot left open. So it's encouraging to hear that you're filling the spots and that it's not, that it's not being, that your efforts are not being wasted, they're being maximized.
Yeah, and we're seeing good results so far with the Power Scholars filling that up as well this year.
Thank you so much. Wonderful program.
Ms. Darling?
I just wanted to say thank you. My younger son is doing the Blast Off to Kindergarten program this summer, and I have been a nervous wreck about him going. So it was kind of nice to see what he's looking forward to.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you for coming tonight. This was wonderful. And the Picasso Peeps, I wish you would bring it and put it on our walls. They're so empty here now. We always display our students' great art, and we've been bare for, I think, about a month already, and we need to fill up the wall. So if the students don't want to take them home, please give it to us so we can display them.
I'll speak to my artists.
Thank you.
And just going back to the Blast Off to Kindergarten, it makes a huge difference in the fall. From before we did it till when we started doing it, we always had a lot of hesitant kindergartners on the first day that, you know, kind of that, you know, rip the Band-Aid, separate kind of thing. And we saw that drop like tremendously. We barely have any students now. Not everyone comes to Blast Off to Kindergarten, but we do, we fill that up every year. And it makes a really big difference with that social anxiety and that separation anxiety that we see with our kindergartners coming in the first day. And just being able to know where to go, know how to hold a pencil, which you would think would be pretty simple things, having students, a majority of your students be able to do that helps us to get into more academic and social work much faster. It was a huge difference when we began that years ago.
Thank you.
Honestly, I think it's just super valuable that you guys teach them how to go to the bathroom and where that is, because that was always my biggest anxiety, going to a new school as a child, not knowing where, thinking, "What if I had to go to the bathroom? It's a problem." So thank you, guys, for everything you do.
Ms. Lampier?
I have two questions, actually. I was a little, I wanted to make sure that I understand about the Blast Off to Kindergarten. Is it like a one-day thing where the kids come in and meet everybody, or does it go on for longer than that?
Sorry, I should have clarified that more. It is a summer program, so it is a four-week summer, like, school program. So it runs, it's 8 to 12, I believe, is what our hours are. So it's like a half-day program during the summer for four weeks.
That's great. So the next question I have is, kids that come in and experience all these great summer programs, what happens the next year if they don't make it into the program? Are they disappointed? Do kids get to do it multiple years sometimes?
Yep. So that's why we try to keep our summer program running for grades 1 through 5. We can't offer it to everyone like we do with our incoming kindergartners, but if there's a need that we identify, we invite them to it. And if there's spaces, we move along the list.
Thank you so much, guys. I think, any other questions? No? Well, thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to the boring stuff. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Zeeem.
Second.
Ms. Gilio seconded that. Thank you so much. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so two noes. Okay. Are there any items not on the consent agenda that we want to add? No? Okay. So now we are quickly moving along to the first public comment period. I don't know if we have anybody signed up for...
I didn't sign up.
Yeah, is it on the agenda, or are you speaking about something off the agenda?
Off the agenda, briefly.
Okay, it'll have to be second public comment. Sorry. But it's okay, we'll make it quick.
Can we put this up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't do front room off. Just do projector. Second public comment. Okay. Oh, thank you. So what we have on the public comment sheet, sign up, is all for second public comment, so I'll call people down later. Rick, I know you had something you wanted to add. If we don't have any objection, do you want to come back? Okay. Just a quick one. You object? Does anybody else object?
Yes, I object. Yeah, I'd like to speak about before we're allowing, if it's not on the agenda.
Unfortunately, I have to run to another Aldermanic meeting, so can't be here for the second public comment. And it's sort of a generic Joint Special School Building Committee.
Will we be adhering to the same rules we do for other public comments?
Like three minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we make an exception. Is that what we want to do?
Sure.
To the rule? That's the way we used to do it.
Yep.
So I make a motion that we make an exception so that he can get to his other meeting.
Yes, and I'll second that.
I'd like to question this. Are we going to make exceptions to everybody when parents come in?
We have on occasion.
So I think what we're working against is just his timeframe and just kind of extending that professional courtesy. But obviously, if you're not in favor of it, you can vote against it.
I'd like to find out if the Board of Aldermen would make the exception for us, which they don't do.
Well, they're not us. We're nicer. Okay, so on the motion to allow Alderman Dowd to speak at first public, say aye.
Aye.
So that was Zeeem, Darling, you, me, Sharon, Lampier, and Mr. Claffey. Did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay. And Ms. Johnson and Ms. Brown said no.
Okay.
Okay, so continue on.
Just a couple of quick things, and I don't think it'll be three minutes.
Is the microphone on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, I want to apologize for the confusion about the meeting that we had on the Subcommittee on the Joint Special. There was never any intention of the Joint Special doing anything relative to the naming of the new school. The past president, being on the Board of Ed for 10 years, would never vote to do anything to usurp your power. I've always said in all the meetings that you have the ultimate authority to name the new school. What I was asked to do was, our architects and construction managers are getting very antsy about things in the schedule. So we just wanted to get a status of where you were. At that meeting, we found out that you have a Subcommittee to do the naming. We're fine. Joint Special's out of it. We won't have any other involvement at all.
Okay.
But I did want to tell you that we now finally have the Wetlands approval from DES, from the state, and final approval from the Army Corps Engineers. So the school is moving forward very, very rapidly. If you go down there, you'll see that the first two wings have their foundations in, and the roads are pretty much built. A lot of the planting's been done. We're working in concert with the Conservation Commission, who are working with us. So the school is moving along smartly. And just for the public record as well, I want to tell you that this school will be one of the safest schools in the country.
Yes, very excited about that.
I get into specifics on security, but we've got most everything covered.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so just wanted to update you on where we were with that and hope you have a good meeting.
Thank you, Alderman Dowd. Are we still on for, is it a June 2024 start, or is that pushed up, too? Did I hear it was early, we may be looking at earlier?
September 24.
September 24. That's what I meant.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be open for summer school.
Oh, nice. All right. Well, thank you so much. I appreciate it. And our ad hoc committee for the naming has its first meeting on Wednesday at 5:30. So if you want...
Again, sorry for the confusion it caused. It was a publicly notified meeting in accordance with state law, and we had an agenda, and it was open to the public. Anyone could have gone. So, thank you. We'll see you.
Thank you. Okay. So seeing no other first public comments, we are off to the superintendent's comments.
Thank you. Seven things for today. Congratulations to the track team members of both high schools. The following athletes won individual NHIA Division I championships last weekend. In the boys, Jack Sullivan, class of 23, won the long jump. Toby Brown, class of 23, won the shot put. Eden Damas won the javelin. Soraya Ross won both 100-meter and the 200-meters. Sal's 4x100 relay won their event in just under 49 seconds. Mia Cruz and Soraya Ross, class of 24, were part of that relay team. Olivia Maserol won the high jump, and Madeline Novak won the shot put and the javelin. So congratulations to all those track athletes. Congratulations to Greg Montine, Nashua High South Teacher of English and the recipient of the 22 Nobel Award. The class of 2022, members of the South Chapter of the National Honors Society selected Greg. Each year, the senior class members of the society vote for one outstanding teacher who leads students, communicates enthusiasm and respect for the subject taught, and inspires students to develop a hunger for learning and serves as a role model for students. The Nobel Award alternates between North and South each year. Keith Richard and the Honors Society officers presented Greg with a $7,500 cash award, made possible each year by an anonymous donor. The Nobel Award symbolizes a school bell without a hammer to represent the many efforts Greg Montine and so many of our teachers make each day for our students that go unheralded. Congratulations, Greg. Third, congratulations to Carmen Coskow, Teacher of the Death at New Searls Elementary School for advancing as a semifinalist in the New Hampshire Department of Education Teacher Program for '23. She is a Teacher of the Death and has been in the school district since 1994. We wish her the best in the ongoing selection process. She's one of... Sal's four-by-100 relay won their event in just under 49 seconds. Mia Cruz and Soraya Ross, class of 22, 24, were part of that relay team. Olivia Maserol won the high jump, and Madeline Novak won the shot put and the javelin. So, congratulations to all those track athletes.
Wow.
Congratulations to Greg Montine, Nashville High South Teacher of English and the recipient of the '22 Nobel Award. The class of 2022, members of the South Chapter of the National Honors Society selected Greg. Each year, the senior class members of the society vote for one outstanding teacher who leads students, communicates enthusiasm and respect for the subject taught, and inspires students, students to develop a hunger for learning, and serves as a role model for students. The Nobel Award alternates between North and South each year. Keith Richard and the Honors Society officers presented Greg with a $7,500 cash award, made possible each year by an anonymous donor. The Nobel Award symbolizes a school bell without a hammer to represent the many efforts Greg Montine and so many of our teachers make each day for our students that go unheralded. Congratulations, Greg. Third, congratulations to Carmen Coskow, Teacher of the Death at New Surrills Elementary School for advancing as a semifinalist in the New Hampshire Department of Education Teacher Program for '23. She is a Teacher of the Death and has been in the school district since 1994. We wish her the best in the ongoing selection process. She's one of 44 nominees statewide that included eight Nashville school district teachers. And the Teacher of the Year will be announced this October. Next, nearly 200 elementary school students completed the Nashville Nine Challenge. The Nashville Nine Reading Challenge is a call for elementary school librarians this year to all students in grades three to five to explore nine different categories of books during the year. Students were inspired to broaden their reading choices from biographies to poetry and realistic fiction to mysteries. And we're delighted that so many students have been able to open book choices that they may not have considered before. So, congratulations to our Nashville Niners. Also, recently, COVID-19 vaccine boosters are approved for young children, and the Division of Public Health and Community Services have vaccine boosters available at no cost twice a week. You can call the Department of Public Health for that information. And last, second to last, senior week is underway at both high schools. I'm sure our students can speak to that. Just as a reminder, the most important day of the year is coming up, graduation. This Friday, June 10th, we have Brentwood Academy graduation. And then next week, June 13th, South at Stellows, and June 14th, North at Stellows. And lastly, but not least, I know there have been a number of questions and concerns regarding the school safety. I just want the public and the board to know that we take those concerns very seriously, and we've done a lot of things that are both visible, like cameras or vestibules or personnel. But we also invest a lot in invisible things that may not be apparent to the public, from SEL to mental health, additional counselors. So, we're fortunate to have both a great partnership with the Police Department and a dedicated person in Chris Lassard, who makes that all happen and keeps the schools in check. So, with that, I'm all set for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Board response to superintendent's comments. Ms. Raymond wants to go first.
I do.
Okay.
Sorry. I just want to say congratulations to all of the people that you listed, especially our, our two exceptional teachers. But I wanted to ask Dr. McKinney to email the board the details for Brentwood's graduation Friday night. Right now, while I'm thinking of it, because I meant to email you after the last meeting, and I forgot, so I'm going to ask you right now. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody else have any comments? Board responses? Ms. Giulio?
It's always nice to hear so many great things. So, thank you.
Yes. Okay. We're all set. Student member of the board's comments?
I'll go first.
Okay.
I was going to talk a little bit about graduation, but Dr. McKinney got that for me. So, thank you. And also, fall sports registration opened on June 1st for the 2022 fall sport season. And lastly, final assessments are up and coming, June 20th and 21st, and good luck to all the students out there. Remember, there are resources like the Fifth Block, which runs Monday through Thursday from 2:15 to 4:15, where you can cram in that extra study time.
Yeah, I just wanted to start off by saying that the seniors had their last day of school this past Friday, and now today and tomorrow, they're having their finals days. So, just wanted to say goodbye to the class of 2022, and just thank you so much for your contribution to the Nashville South community. You will be missed. And then additionally, I know I walked in when we're having a moment of silence, but I just want to say that, you know, with the passing of another deadly school shooting and many more acts of gun violence across the country, our faculty and students alike have had a lot of productive conversations over the past few days regarding safety and how to feel safe in our schools. So, I just want to additionally thank our amazing security administrative teams, who've just been there along the way to make our students feel safe. And on that note, after the passing, after the passing of the past, like, school shooting, we had a group of students in Nashville South and a few from North plan, organize a March for Our Lives protest, which will be one of the many protests happening nationwide this coming Saturday, I believe. And...
The 11th.
The 11th, right. Yeah. And everyone will meet at the Soldiers and Sailors Monument around 12:50 and march to Greeley Park to demand change, as well as listen to some wonderful speakers. So, I encourage everyone to attend, and I just want to extend my gratitude to the students who did take the initiative to organize that and make a difference in their communities. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, it's heavy to move on after that, huh? It's hard. But we'll keep it somber with policy.
Back to less fun. Sorry, I was just trying to pull my attachments up. They weren't coming quickly. Okay. The Committee on Policy, we had a second policy meeting last month on the 24th because we just have so many policies that we have been working on. So, the first one, I move to approve policy BBAA Board Member Authority as it was amended at the Policy Committee.
Does anybody from Policy want to second that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Darling.
Comments? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. At the last meeting, there was a couple of issues I had. The Board of Education, as members, shall not give orders to any subordinate of the superintendent, either publicly or privately. And I had concerns, we don't give orders, but if we need to get any information, we should be able to send an email to the different departments in the Administration Building and just ask for information. We're not going to give orders. We're just asking for information. Not everything should have to go through the superintendent because the superintendent is very busy. And I wanted to add that Board members shall be able to contact personnel to request information, clarification, questions, and answers versus going to the superintendent. And I think that's a reasonable request, basically, because, again, the superintendent's very busy. Superintendent shouldn't have to drop everything. If we need to go to one of the assistant superintendents, we should be able to. We need to speak to Mr. Donovan about something, we should be able to. So, this is what I'd like to add to the policy. So, I'm making a motion to add to number, to the last sentence.
Okay.
The Board of Education and its members.
So, the motion is to amend the policy. Last line to add.
A second before you write that down?
Sure.
You had a second, right? Oh, you made it...
This is for policy, motion, amendment.
I'll second it. But I would also support just sending the policy back to committee if we don't want to get into the minutia right now.
I don't particularly want to get into the minutia, but the committee already sent it forward the way it was, so... But I'll, I'll write it down now. To add, to amend it, the last line to add, members may what?
Members shall be able to contact personnel to request information, clarification, questions, answers, versus going to the superintendent each time.
Should it say personnel or should it be more specific in what level? Because like, I don't necessarily think that we should be able to just go in and...
In the Administration Building.
Okay.
In Administration.
Can I, can I have a, ask a question about that? And this probably is best answered by Administration, but when I'm, and to clarify if this, if, if this is not what you're trying to say, but when I have questions about things that are coming up on agendas, like for committee meetings or for board agendas, those are the times that I feel that I can reach out to, you know, whoever that administrator is. Like, if I have a question about policy, I reach out and email Heather and then the administrator for that because I'd have a clarification on it. Is that what you mean, Ms. Johnson? Because I feel like anything outside of what's on the agenda, I mean, the superintendent should kind of know what they're, what, what his people are doing, just to keep tabs on these not, they're not doing too much outside of what he knows that they're doing?
Well, we're not hiding anything. If I send something to a superintendent, I add the names onto the emails, and then I'm told that I'm not going by policy, what are we overstepping? If we've had a meeting and there was information that we talked about, and let's say it was Mr. Parker who was speaking on it, why shouldn't I be able to go to Mr. Parker and ask for clarification, what happened in a committee meeting? Why would I have to go five, six steps to just get a quick answer?
Right. So, I think that's in regards to committee meeting stuff. I think follow-up...
In committee, but even if, even some other questions that might come up, that you're doing research and they say, well, I've got a question here. I just want to ask that person.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we shouldn't have to start jumping through hoops here. Our job is to set policy and to make sure we know what information we need. And I feel, over the last several years, there's too many steps involved. If I needed some information, which I had sent to Dr. McKinney, and I also added the people on the email that I needed, I was overstepping my bounds, you know? And I shouldn't have to. If I need a question answered by Mr. Donovan, it's just a quick question, I'm not going to demand, hey, I need it right this minute. I always say, at your convenience, could you please supply me with this information? There's nothing wrong with that. You're being polite, you're asking, and you're not demanding.
Ms., oh, sorry, Ms. Ziem.
I'm not trying to interrupt you. I'm sorry. Turned my, turned my thing off. Jim will get me. I didn't mean to interrupt you. I, I guess I have two points, and I, and because of my two points, I would go to Mrs. Brown's suggestion that we take this back to committee. But after I have put mine on the table, and if you, if you, if you don't agree with me, then we'll vote on it and it'll move. But my, I have two things in, in, in this that I, but I would also like to address what Mrs. Johnson was saying. Unfortunately, I, I think that sometimes, as board members, we do overstep our authority. It just, it's, and I'm not trying to pick on any one person. I probably do it as much as anybody, maybe unintentionally to. But nevertheless, it, it puts the superintendent, whether, whoever the superintendent has to be, it would, it would put them in an awkward position because they're caught in the middle. And so, that, I believe, is the reason for it. And unfortunately, because of that, because I have seen it happen in my 14 years, it has happened. I just tell you, it has. That being said, there are two, I, I do think that this gets, this whole policy gets into the personal relationship that the board has with the superintendent. And because we are, because we are unfortunately going to lose Dr. McKinney, we will be with a new superintendent, and I wonder if it wouldn't be nice to let that new superintendent have a voice in this policy. And then, secondly, there, there were two, two, two things that I, and I'm not sure whether this is where the board feels it belongs, but I personally feel that we really need to have as part of this, this policy. We need to say to the public, because, and maybe it's in another policy, and I'm not aware of it, and if it is, then my point is ill-taken. But I think that we need to give the public their, their way to get to a board hearing. They need to know that if they have an issue in their child's class, that first they go to the teacher. And oh my, I have heard this so many times, because people don't know the process unless you educate them, just as I, we all need to be educated. But it goes to the teacher first, and then to the assistant principal or the principal, whichever happens to be the one most appropriate, and sometimes both of them even. And then from there, it would come to the assistant superintendent or the superintendent, and then it would come to the board. And the reason it comes that way is because it, again, if it's a board hearing and we are hearing about it before, during, then, of course, it cloudies the issue. And so, and I, I think it's a service to our public, to, to the parents, to have that process in writing somewhere. And it seems to me that it would be under, under board member, you know, I mean, if, if that's our policy, then it, then it comes under our authority, I think. But, but if you have it somewhere else, that would take care of it. And then the, the other thing is that, and I'm not sure it was in this policy or one of the others, but when, tonight, for instance, we had this, this issue where you can only speak in the first time, the public can only speak with what's on the agenda. And then at the end of the meeting, they can speak on anything they choose to speak to. Well, to me, that should also clearly be published for the public to know that, so that when they come, they know that if they're going to speak on something that's not here, they need to come later. They need to come at eight or 8:30 or nine, just to be courteous. I also think that it would be nice to have in there that we are free to make exceptions to that rule anytime we feel, because over the years, I've seen it done any number of times. It was not unusual that we made exceptions just out of courtesy to the, somebody would come and say, I have this or this or this, not even just Aldermen. Sometimes, if we're not overloaded, and there's somebody, a, a teacher that needs to go to bed because they got up at 6 o'clock and worked until 5 o'clock to get home, like, I, I was delighted to see Mrs. Carrie leave early tonight because I know she's been putting in long hours, long teacher's hours, and they get tired. They're human, like all of us. So, I would like to see that also. And I apologize to this board that I was not able to make the policy meeting. I do, I, I will make every effort to come and, and join you and, and give you the pleasure of all my hot air. So, that being said, I'll shut up.
Ms. Raymond?
Well, thank you for pointing out about the public participation because that is on our agenda this evening that we talked about at our last policy meeting, and I think you'll be pleased with the clarity that we put regarding public comments. Coming back to this particular policy that we're talking about, which is Board Member Authority, it comes directly from the RSAs and Ed 303. So, it, but this isn't something that is unique to our district or our way of doing things. And I certainly think that if Dr. Andre, when he comes on in July, has a different way of wanting to run things, there's no reason why we can't change things at that point. I just would hate to see a policy that we're required to update every so often not get updated when it hasn't been since 2007 because some members would like to be able to have more contact with admin than they have right now. So...
Ms. Brown?
So, I, as I said, I think that there are a lot of things that are still outstanding in this policy before it's right, and I would, again, argue that it should be sent back to committee. And I think, actually, I just thought of another. I agree with both Ms. Johnson and Ms. Ziem that there is a cultural component that that last sentence adds to the district as a whole that kind of cuts off the superintendent and district office from really a community atmosphere that I don't think fosters communication up or down in the information stream, flow of information. And that's why I think it would be valuable to delay this until we see how the next superintendent would like to treat the culture in general. However, I also thought, while Ms. Ziem was speaking, how important it is in our roles to educate the commit, community in policies and procedures regularly. I think we probably all get phone calls or bump into someone that says, what do I do if I have this question? And, you know, you direct them, did you talk to the teacher? Yes. Did you talk to the principal? Yes. Did I talk to the, whatever step they're on, it's our job to put them in that right, the right direction when they approach us with the questions. So, maybe there actually needs to be an align in here, under Board Member Authority or our responsibilities. Some, and I, again, this is where I'm kind of like, it needs more work, because I was writing this kind of as I'm sitting here. Individual board members shall educate the public on policy and procedures when appropriate and may give advice on how to reach the appropriate committee mem, I don't, I don't know, like, I think, I don't know exact, I don't know exactly how to say it, but I think that that something like that may be an appropriate addition also when you're talking about flow of information and what we should be doing as representatives.
I think that's in our Board of, our Ethics Policy. Can I? Is what to do with, when, when people come up and have those concerns is how, to educate them with the best knowledge that we have. So, it's our responsibility to say...
And that's what I'm saying. I actually think that's actually under our authority and responsibilities, almost more than our ethical responsibilities.
Can I just be very clear? Because this is... Because this is the third meeting in a row. I will not be withdrawing things back to policy unless the board directs me to do so by a majority vote because people don't come to policy meeting. And so I think it's incredibly disrespectful to those of us who do take the time to read the packets, email me their thoughts if they have thoughts, or go to the meetings to wait until it comes to the full board, to try and then change the wording of the policies. The, we have committee meetings specifically to be respectful of everybody's time here so that we're not wordsmithing at the main board. Now, if there's a particular reason why someone can't make it, that's fine. But the district has provided us all with our own, you know-
Electronic-
Means of electronic communication. I have a phone. It's been very common for people to email the policy chair for as long as I've been on the board to say, "I have these thoughts." And I have never prevented people from sharing their thoughts at a policy committee meeting.
Yeah, I used to bring those emails right to the committee. Ms. Brown? Oh, again with the-
I just wanted to point out to everybody that the previous policy that we're changing, it actually has the same, the same thing in it. It says, um, I'm sorry, I lost it now. It says, "The Board of Education and its members shall deal with administrative services through the superintendent and shall not give orders to any subordinate of the superintendent, either publicly or privately." I don't really see where the change is in what we're, what we should be doing. I, I don't see that. I don't see why this is a sticking point.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I brought this up at the committee meeting. And the changes I'm bringing again, I brought up at the committee meeting.
Right, and we had to do that.
The committee voted against me. That's fine, you know? It was two to one, majority wins. But I have the right to bring it back up here to the full board and ask them if they would like to make the changes because I think this is important. And I agree with Ms. Brown. We have a new superintendent coming on board. He might want to change this. I mean, do we want to go through this whole thing on the policy? Or do we just go bring, send it back to policy for July? And I know there's a policy meeting in June because we're having finance at four-thirty, then policy right after.
Wait, isn't finance tomorrow?
No. No, it's got canceled.
Oh, I didn't know that.
It didn't come off the calendar, but it's off, it should be off the calendar now.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Darling and then Ms. Brown?
First of all, I apologize for missing the last policy meeting. I had a very sick family member in the hospital. That being said, the more I'm hearing everyone talk about it, the more I'm, you know, at first I was just going to say, like, pass it through, I like it. But now I'm wondering if we should wait for the new superintendent because we don't know what his thoughts are. That being said, I feel like it's the ethics policy that we would need to be looking at for the communication stuff because it's in there, too. But the line that I'm seeing here is, "Shall not give orders." So, Ms. Johnson, what you were saying, if you email asking for something, that's not giving an order. That's asking. Just my two cents.
So I think it would be helpful if everybody took a moment to read ED three, the law, ED 303, which states what our duties are. And they are able to give more definition to what our legal requirements are for speaking with superintendents and assistant superintendents. So I don't know if everybody's taken a peek at that, but it's, this is pulled from that and from, there is a lot of noise out there. What's going on out there, guys? With sports or cheering? Coming for a second public comment?
Is it the sports award night?
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Brown?
So I would just also like to mention that I did also call Ms. Raymond regarding this policy and a similar one on the phone. And I also emailed Ms. Johnson and Ms. Darling, even though I am not on the committee, my thoughts on how I feel about this policy. And I'll just be honest, yes, I, I actually agree again with Ms. Darling. I think I agree with everyone who's spoken except for the motion to pass this tonight, that I think that this particular thing, whether like the concept of badgering employees, is unethical and it belongs in there. But I do believe that, and I know off the record that multiple people in this room believe the same way as me, at least is what they say, that this particular line in this particular policy has been unfairly enforced without the spirit of what it was supposed to, was originally intended. And I, so I, you know, I'll be the ba- I'll be the bad guy and say what needs to be said. You all know what I mean. So.
Okay. So on the motion, oh, Ms. Johnson?
Yes. When exactly was this put in, this line?
That line was from the original policy. So it has been in this policy since at least 2007.
And there was a reason why we must have put this in?
It wasn't here in 2007?
No, I was, I was, wasn't on any board at that point.
There may, there may have been board members at that time who were maybe acting inappropriately. So this was to zero in on the efforts. However, since then, honestly, this line makes it so, I mean, if you want to go by the letter of what this says, we can't even talk to our liaisons for our committee, our committees. We can't, I mean, if you go by the absolute letter, yeah, that's not the spirit of what it says. But that's by the letter of this policy, the way it's written. And it's not good.
So if this policy doesn't pass, it just reverts back to the old one, right?
Yeah.
Which says the same thing?
Yeah.
Okay. So on the motion to vote on the amendment, all those in favor of Ms. Johnson's amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you review the amendment?
Yep, so I wrote, and Ms. Johnson, tell me if I've missed anything. The motion is to amend the policy's last line to add, "Members shall be able to contact personnel and administration for questions and information."
Clarification.
Oh, and clarification, sorry.
Should we add on, "but will not give orders"?
No.
No.
So we've already voted on the motion. It didn't pass?
No, we didn't.
On the amendment, yeah, everybody?
No.
No, Ms., I'm sorry. Ms. Seem asked for clarity on what the amendment said.
Right.
But I think she didn't vote, right?
I did not vote.
She did not vote because she didn't, she wasn't clear on what she was voting on.
Not sure that Christine did either.
I did not.
I'm not trying to put words in anybody's mouth.
All right, so on the motion to amend this policy, the motion to amend the policy presented?
Yes, the motion to add to the policy. So this is the amendment. Add, "Members shall be able to contact personnel and administration for questions and clarification." I'm just going to go. Ms. Darling?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Nope.
Ms. Gilio?
No.
I'm a no. Ms. Lampier?
No.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, and Ms. Bishop?
No.
Okay. It is four to five, it fails. So back to the original motion, which is to approve policy BBAA, board member authority.
Ms. Brown has something to say?
I move to table this motion until after July 1st.
I'll second.
Discussion on the motion to table the motion till July, all those in favor?
I actually have a question. Will it hurt anyone if we table it?
If you table it from here, then it gets tabled back to this committee, back to the full board until July.
Okay, but nobody would be like negatively affected over the next three weeks if?
Well, it just comes back to this committee and we have the same exact no changes policy.
Except then we have the new superintendent, which I think was part of the, the question was waiting for him to come on. Sorry.
No, I'm just saying, it just comes back to the full board in July.
I would think if the superintendent had a huge issue with it, he'd bring it back to the policy committee and have us review it. So on the motion to table the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I said aye.
Okay, it's Darling, Johnson-
Brown.
And Brown. So four people want to table it? And all those opposed?
No.
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 Be the remainder, I think.
All right, so it's the same.
Unless somebody wanted to abstain.
Oh.
So five people don't want to table it?
Right.
So on the motion to-
Table, it's four to five, so that fails. And so back to passing it. Ms. Darling?
No.
Okay, Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Lampier?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Johnson?
No.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay. So that one passes, one, two, three, six to three. Okay. The next policy is B, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, before we move on to the next policy, can I just make an observation? I'm a little confused about our committees. I mean, I thought the whole purpose of our committees was for these decisions to be made on a committee level, a decision to be made and then brought to the full board for our approval. I personally would not want to work on every one of our committees, and I'm retired. I would never have the time to do all that. So I trust the people on the committees to bring forward to us what they think is in the best interest of the school district. And I agree with Ms. Raymond. It seems like the last three meetings, we've been spending an awful lot of time discussing things that have already been brought forward to us by committee. And I don't understand that as being the whole process of having the committees to begin with. So that's my comment.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Gilio. I move that we approve policy BBAB, roles and duties of the board president.
And clerk.
What? Oh, and clerk. I lost two words there.
Second.
So Ms. Raymond made that motion, Ms. Darling seconded. Any discussion or questions? Ms. Seem?
I think this is the one where the two things that I brought up should, should, unless I'm missing something, rules and duties of the, of the board president and clerk. I think that, I don't know, this, the, this thing that came up tonight with, with Mr. Dowd, I think putting, unless there's some, unless it's somewhere else and, and if it is, I apologize.
It's in the next one, Ms. Seem?
It's in the next one?
Yep.
Both of these are in it?
The, what you were talking about.
I'd actually read through it.
Yeah. Under public participation at board meetings, BEDH, that's the next one. You're talking, you're looking at numbers one, two, and three.
So when you're talking about, for instance, the process to get to the board hearing?
That, to get to a board hearing is policies KE and KEB, which are also referenced in BEDH. And I've been trying over the last few months to, anytime something is referenced, pull all of those policies. Like policy BEDH, which is the next one, references KE and KEB. We talked about KE and KEB at the last full board meeting. We just didn't get all the way through BEDH, which was referenced by those two. Does that make sense? And trying to get everything that's related in one meeting so that we all have it fresh in our minds.
So you're telling me that the process to get to a board hearing is there?
Yeah, it's in KE and KEB.
So also in, in the board packet, so when I, and it's not out right now just because we don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of public comment. But back when we had a lot of public comment coming in, I would put those two policies up with the public sign-in sheet so people knew if they were going to do second comment in regards to a concern or complaint they had about whatever was going on in their student's life, that they could reference that policy, which would have been right on the podium.
And so both of those, both that I brought up?
And they're in the yellow folder that's in the board bag. I just didn't put them out today because-
And I just want to say that I do not challenge for one minute Mrs. Raymond's conscientious duties being, that she's done an, I was very pleased. I personally thought you did a great job. So I'm certainly not, I am certainly not intending for it to appear as though I am making a disparaging remark. I just, I just think that those two things are things that we continuously hear people, that they don't seem to understand that's what the policy is. So maybe the good that came of it is that hopefully somebody tonight in the public didn't know those two things and they heard it, so thank you.
Yep. The School Board Association had a, a training specifically dedicated to those topics. And I'm sure they'll do it again this year because they became so relevant to so many people during COVID.
Contentuous, it was really contentious, yes.
So, okay, I lost where I was. Oh, I made the motion for BBAB, and Ms. Darling seconded it.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, on the motion to approve policy BBAB, roles and duties of the board president, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay. Okay, moving along.
Okay. So that's eight to one. I move that we approve policy BEDH, public participation at board meetings.
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
She's telling, I, you're telling me that that's covered in the KEB, so I'm-
Which is referenced in this policy?
Yes, I saw. KEB, I see it, thank you.
To tell people exactly where to look.
Thank you. Okay.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I think I brought up at the meeting, number six, any comments which is, "Do not adhere to the above or which disrupt the official business of the board may be ruled out of order by the chair." Repeated disruption may result in the individual being asked to leave the meeting. Obscene speech, comments threatening bodily harm, which I don't believe in bodily harm, let's clear that right now. Or unprotected speech will not be tolerated. Unfortunately, there was a case that went to the New Hampshire Supreme Court back in 2015 because somebody was rowdy at the meeting and they won the case in the New Hampshire Supreme Court. You can't do this. So some of this language really can't be in here because you're violating First Amendment rights. Relative to public comment on the Board of Aldermen, I pulled that. And that was amended. And I don't know if you've seen this, but they, they had the public comment not to exceed 15 minutes upon vote of the majority of the board. I did get the signed copy of this by the mayor when they changed this. But you can't do this. So some of this language, I can understand bodily harm, yep, that needs to stay. But anything else, you cannot do that. With the aim of maintaining focus on the issues and discussion, it is desired that all speakers strive to adhere to ordinary norms of decorum and civility. Well, we don't even do that on our boards. How can you ask members of the public to do that? You know, so you're asking them to do something that we had so much discussion here and outrage last year, that you're going to ask members of the public to show decorum? Then we, as a board, need to do it. So that's what I'm saying. That's what I believe needs to be corrected.
I, I checked on what you had brought up after our discussion in our policy meeting last time regarding to number six there, the, the comments that may be ruled out of order. And what I found is that people have the First Amendment right to say what they want, but they do not have a right to disrupt a public meeting. There's no provision in New Hampshire for public comments at school board meetings. So at any time, technically, we could decide as a board not to allow public comments at all. There are school districts here in New Hampshire that don't have public comments. I think here in Nashua, we have a, a healthy history of public participation at our board meetings, and we would very much like to. And the, the chair has been to trainings on what things are, are appropriate expressions of First Spee- First Amendment protected speech and what things are not. But being disruptive and preventing the business of the meeting from going forward is not protected. That is grounds to be ruled out of order and be asked to leave. However, you cannot tell someone, if they said, "I feel that you are, you know, really stupid Heather Raymond, and I disagree with everything that you've said," I can't then say, "You can't say that. I'm going to ask someone to arrest you for that." That would be a gross overstep of the chair and would lead to a successful Supreme Court case. The case that did succeed in the Supreme Court was regarding a person on the board, not a person participating.
Now, these were actual people in the audience. Now, these were actual people in the audience. These were in the audience?
Yeah, so I did a couple of trainings with NHSBA about, you know, what are the legal definitions of obscene? And what kind of unprotected speech is protected and not? Because their rights are so imperative that they didn't want me stepping all over them. That training is open to anybody who wants to on the board. I can certainly forward them to you, but they were very clear that there is very little that people can say that would make me say, "You need to stop talking, you need to leave." So unless they're, you know, threatening bodily harm or... It was a really... I mean, the line for what is acceptable is so far away from what I would think is acceptable that, I mean, people can really come up here and say whatever they want. They can swear at us, they can call us names, they can...
And they did.
And they did. But I think, I mean, in order to keep those meetings in order, we had those rules ahead of time. But really, it was the disruption of the meeting. But, I mean, obscene speech, because it is such a vague... it can be such a vague definition. It really is the responsibility of the person who's going to be saying what is obscene or not to be properly educated on what that language is. And if I tell somebody as the chair that they can't say what they're saying, I better be ready for them to challenge me in any kind of court process they want to. So typically, they get a long leash.
So obscene shouldn't be in there. I understand with threatening bodily harm, I think that should be left in there. But obscene is by... in the eyes of the beholder because it says right here in the court case. It had to do, the second case, City of Keene versus James Cleveland, is an equity robust defense of free speech, though the defendant is less sympathetic. Cleveland is one of the self-described Robin Hooders who follow Keene parking enforcement officers and shout at them to get out to quit collecting parking meter revenue. But the Robin Hood behavior is juvenile, right? Mean-spirited and stupid. But it's also protected speech.
It is protected speech, but for example, somebody coming up here and detailing some graphic sexual activity at a school board meeting very well could be considered obscene speech that isn't protected under the First Amendment. Now, we've never had anyone do that. The only time we've ever cut people off is if they go well beyond the three minutes and are being harassing. But there's a reason why that particular language was used.
Yep. So I think that is the best vague definition we can put in a policy and still have it in there. Because if we have nothing, then we have no grounds to ask people to stop talking. But if we have this really long leash, at least it protects us from, you know, maybe there are students in the audience or something, whatever it is. But are you making a motion to amend? Or did you just want to make that comment?
Well, I'd like to amend it, to take part of this out. I've got to go back to my paper. I know it's not going to pass. Obscene speech, comments, just obscene speech, comments threatening bodily harm. I get that. That should never be, nobody should ever threaten us for anything. That goes over and beyond your rights on free speech. But, you know, obscene speech, you know?
So your motion is to delete the word obscene?
Yep.
Okay, so on the motion to amend...
To amend number six?
Yes.
To remove obscene speech?
And leave everything else?
Ooh, phrase, okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so on the motion to amend policy B-E-D-H as presented by Ms. Johnson, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those not in favor?
No.
No.
No?
No.
Okay, so who are the yeses? Could you just show me your hands?
There'll be seven.
It was Ms. Gilio, me, you, Darling.
We were nos.
No, I just, I wanted to know, Ms. Johnson voted aye. Ms. Seem?
Yep.
And that's it?
Yep, and Mr. Claffey has stepped out. Okay. Whenever you're ready. On the motion to approve policy B-E-D-H as presented, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
Nay.
Oh, nay, sorry, I voted on the wrong one. I wanted, my vote's nay.
Okay. So Seem, Johnson, and Brown voted nay. And Mr. Claffey's still out of the room. How dare he?
And Claffey, next.
I'm just waiting for Heather to finish.
I'm sorry, I just have to... I have to put it in two different... It doesn't matter. One, two, three. So that one is five, two, three, with Mr. Claffey. Not here. Okay. I move that we rescind policy J-L-D-B-B dash R, which is the procedure for screening student safety. And the reason that we are rescinding this is because it is a procedure, not a policy, and we have other policies... wait, that's not right.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it is. We have other policies that cover this under the suicide prevention and some other things.
I'll second that. Yeah, it allows flexibility to change the student screening process as information, technology tools become more available to us.
Right, it's just weird. I was, I got hung up because it said board approved 52322, and I was like, "That's not right."
Okay, so all... any discussion or questions?
Wait, did you second it?
I did.
Okay.
Seeing no discussion or questions on the policy to rescind J-L-D-B-B-R so that it becomes just a procedure, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Seeing none, motion passes.
Okay, our next meeting is on the 21st.
Next up is the Committee on H.R.
Yes, first, we need to make a motion to make an exception because we had an H.R. meeting tonight so that we can vote on the personnel recommendations and job descriptions.
So moved.
Thank you. Christina moved. You want me to second? I second?
Thank you. Okay.
Doesn't matter. Doesn't matter.
Okay, sorry, I had a Seem primary, Ms. Darling secondary.
That's fine. Really doesn't matter. Okay, so all those in favor of... so spending the rules? Thank you.
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. Continue on Ms. Seem.
The committee makes a motion that we approve the personnel recommendations dated, was it June 6, 2022?
Okay, I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. All those in favor of approving the personnel recommendations dated 6/6/2022, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes.
The second recommendation is to approve the academic support teacher's job description.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any discussion or comments? Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I kind of walked in towards the end of the personnel meeting. And is this a grant position? Is this the one that's a grant position?
Yes. Both of these positions are grant, paid for by grant, arty.
Okay, and what's the salary range?
Dr. McKinney?
For academic support teacher, what's the salary range?
Per the teacher's contract, it varies depending on the level of experience and the degrees earned by the candidate.
And that's for the both of them?
That's correct.
Okay. I understand that this is a grant... this is grant, but in less than three weeks, we're having a new superintendent coming in. And I don't understand why we're putting this through right away when I'd like to hear what the new superintendent's view and vision is coming up. And, you know, if we had six months to a year, I can understand that. But he's starting the beginning of July. And I just kind of feel that we're rushing this. I mean, you read this, there's so much to the job description. I was listening to the meeting. I probably should have jumped in, raised my hand at that point, but there's a lot. And we don't know what vision and plan Dr. Andre has coming in to the district. He knows the district, he's been in the district before. And we're starting to change things here when we have somebody coming in. And we should be respectful to whichever superintendent was taking over coming July 1st, that they're coming in, and we need to listen to what their view and vision is. That's why we hired them. So I'm not going to support this tonight because I really want to hear what Dr. Andre is planning and want to do. And I'm all for helping our students, but I think that we really need to see what his plan is because he might have a different plan with grant money and what he wants to do. And I think that's the fair way of doing this. It's out of respect for the man who's taking over the position now. No offense to you, Dr. McKinney. I'm just, you know, saying this because we do have... and I wish you the best, and I enjoy working with you. But I think at this point in time, we're too close to having new leadership coming in. And I think we also need to take a look at what he has planned for us. Thank you.
Ms. Gilio?
I think we're beyond the time when we did have additional supports for struggling students. I don't think this is too soon. I think it's perfect that we're proposing this. I'm fully supportive of it, especially if it's being funded by grant money. And I do have two questions, or actually just one question. Is this position going to be one person who's going to cover all the secondary schools? Or will there be more than one person hired for this position? I'm sorry I missed the earlier meeting because I was in Boston. So I would have heard this discussion at the H.R. meeting, but...
That's okay, can't be everywhere. So academic support teachers, three positions at three different schools. And restorative practices facilitator, two positions at both high schools.
Thank you very much. Those were my two questions on both of those. Thank you, and I am fully in support of both.
Ms. Raymond?
Just for clarity as well, I know that the restorative practices facilitator, we approved the restorative practices... we approved seeking that grant earlier this year. We had all the students come in. Is the academic support teacher a completely separate program? And is this brand, brand new? Or is this something that existed before and now we're updating the job description?
It did exist before. Think of it as a, you know, a support teacher, basically a case manager for struggling students, a point person who can communicate with the teachers, communicate with parents, be available during the school day, track down assignments, encourage kids to stay after school, encourage kids to come before school. It's all those things that administrators are doing right now and would help take things off their plate.
How many years has it been since we had... because I... the reason I'm asking is because I know we have a lot of very outdated job descriptions. And so I'm having difficulty parsing out which jobs descriptions we're getting that are brand-new positions that we've created a job description to fit a new thing versus which ones are being updated for existing positions. Does that make sense? So...
I'll have to get back to you on that. I'm looking in the archives now.
Okay, so it's not like within the last couple of years? It's been a while?
Two minutes, I can tell you.
Oh, all right. Oh, see, I don't need an answer to vote, I was just curious. Okay. I mean, I could sit here and tell jokes until...
Well, no, I mean, you could. I was just suggesting I could email the group.
I have a gavel. You guys have to listen to me.
I will get back to you on that. And maybe moving forward, it'd be helpful in H.R. of noting new positions and then saying that we're updating a job description from a past position and when the last update was done.
Right, yeah, that would be helpful to me because I can't, like, I remember that we just did the restorative justices. It's only been like a couple of months since we approved the... and I remember when students come in, I remember, you know, because they're memorable. But I don't always know when we've changed a job title versus something new. Anyways.
Okay. So that was... who made that motion?
Ms. Seem made the motion, and you seconded it for the academic support teacher job description.
So seeing no other comments or questions, all those in favor of approving the academic support teacher job description, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so that... oh, Ms. Johnson said no. Ms. Darling is not in the room.
Got it.
And finally, we make a motion that we approve the restorative practices facilitator job description.
I'll second that one.
Comments or questions on that one?
I just, I'm really excited to see this move forward. I thought the kids did a fantastic job.
Yep.
They did. I remember it well.
Yeah. And there's so much research that shows that this is a fantastic way of interrupting negative behavior. So all those in favor of approving the restorative practices facilitator job description, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Ms. Johnson, Ms. Darling is still not in the room. Okay, so that is it for H.R. Do we have any... I have no unfinished business here. Does anybody have anything to bring up?
Do we have any other liaison reports?
I have a J-S-S-B-C liaison report that's a little more detailed than what we heard from Mr. Dowd earlier. However, a couple of items might be a little outdated because he gave us some more recent information. So we met on May 26th. The new middle school is ahead of schedule. They had a good meeting with the Conservation Commission on improved plantings. There's lots of foundation work being done. At that time, they were still waiting to hear from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, but now that's been approved, so that's great, too.
Environmental Services, but now that's been approved, so that's great, too. We're still waiting for an official groundbreaking ceremony date, which I don't think has been determined yet.
I believe last was stated was the 24th, June 24th.
Oh, okay.
Because the foundation's already actually in.
No, no, this was the picture with the shovels and the formal, the formal, no, I know the groundbreaking's already happened. This is just a formal picture op, photo op.
Warm ground now, easier to move.
And then I do recall that they asked us, and I don't think Mr., that he brought it up tonight, but that they need to know the school colors from us by the end of June because there are certain items they need to order for the school that'll be a permanent part of the building that will be done in the school colors. So I don't know that he mentioned that, but that's something that's on us, I guess.
Yep, we have a meeting on Wednesday for the ad hoc committee where we'll be discussing that.
Great, okay. At Pennechuck, the new wing is already being used by the students. The north classrooms will be done in July, ahead of schedule, so the teachers will be able to get in. The Learning Commons, which previously would have been called a library, is underway but won't be finished until December, but they've already allocated other spaces to be used for that purpose until December. The site will be shut down mostly to the public for most of the summer. The curbs, parking, landscaping, and new entrance will be done by mid-August, and there's still a little bit of work being done at Fairgrounds Middle School, just a few finishing up things, and there's still ongoing meetings about the Franklin Street School.
Excellent, thank you. No other liaison reports, correct? Okay, we have, Mr. Donovan, when are we supposed to go for budget? City Hall is at the 15th?
20th.
The 20th? Okay.
That's a Monday, I believe.
Okay. It's not in my calendar yet, I'll put it there.
Is that during one of our full board meetings?
Nope, our next full board meeting is the 29th, or the 27th, sorry.
So the, we're talking, I'm sorry, you're talking about the Board of Aldermen?
The, just liaison, I was joking around, are there any updates for budget, which, and then I went off on that tangent, so don't worry about me.
So on the 20th, I'm sorry, what's the 20th, other than Curriculum Committee? But...
Yeah, but this would be where we discuss our budget with the Board of Aldermen.
Got it.
So typically, it's the President of the Board, the Superintendent, and myself. Other people are free to come, but if you have another meeting, it's not that the whole board ever shows up for that.
I know. I'm thrilled not to be in the hot seat.
Okay.
Have fun.
So what we have for new business, we do have a non-public that we need to go into. I do see some people here for second public comment. I was wondering if we wanted to do second public comment and then go into new business, which I feel like both are going to end up in non-publics, so that we're not...
So we need a motion to make an exception?
We can just get consensus if we want to bump second public comment up before new business.
I think we should. I think they've waited long enough. They're probably ready to go home.
Okay. Okay. So up first, it looks like that Ms. Gomez, everyone thinks I can't pronounce things, I can't read them.
Madam President, you can skip the first comment, I spoke to that pair.
Excellent. Okay. So Sue Newman?
Yes, thank you. Sue Newman, 25 Charlotte Avenue. And I'm here tonight because I had a brief conversation today with someone, and the food service contract was the focus of our discussion. It's been a while since I've looked at contracts. Admittedly, I did not go through every page of it, just a few pages of it, but my question is, did I understand in the conversation I had today that the wages or the salary increases, there was a retroactive component of that?
Yes.
Thank you. And so I pulled, let me see, Appendix A1. So my specific question is, if there is a food service person who is retired now, but retired in '22, but was here in 2021, do they get the benefit of a retroactive, any benefits that were retroactive?
No, historically, we have not paid retroactive pay to someone that retired, unless it's specifically stated in the contract. Consider the example, you have a contract that is three years old, you're going to go back and you're going to open it up for 40, 50 people that have left the district, so we've been pretty consistent with that. If you retire before the contract is approved, unless there's a special exception, we do not pay the retro to that person.
Okay, thank you. I, yes, and I think the approval date was May 26th, I believe. I think that's what I saw.
I believe.
Okay, thank you. That's, I don't have to agree with that, but that's the practice. Okay. And second thing, I wish Dr. McKinney all the best in his new adventure, adventures. And I will just pass along, because I don't know what you all, if there was any discussion among you all, but a few months back, several months now, many, I think all of the Nashua delegation got a communication from Dr. McKinney, just wondering any interest level for support for our public schools. Okay, so there were, you know, back and forth emails. I had sent an email back because I had some questions, who the audience was, timeframe, time involvement, and things like that. I think it was, could have been Stacy who called me, I'm not sure. I followed up with her, and she said it was just kind of in the hatchling, that was my word, not hers, that it was rough draft and things like that, just kind of an outline. If you have any outline that you want to leave for Dr. Andre, if he wants to move forward with anything like that, I hope you could do that. So, thank you, and thank you all. It's been a very, I don't have to tell you, it's been a very interesting two and a half years, and you've all managed to be at meetings and keep your wits about you despite some very challenging audience participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Patty LaFrance.
Good evening. My name is Patricia LaFrance. I am here on behalf of the United Way. I'm actually speaking kind of on behalf of Michael Appleberg, the President of the United Way of Greater Nashua. With me is Janet Baluk, representing the Rotary Clubs of Nashua. And we are here to present this plaque to Dr. McKinney. And I have to relay a message from Mike, so here it is. So I'm just going to read from his letter to you. Please let me take a moment to express gratitude and appreciation to you from our community for your unwavering support and commitment to the students and families of Nashua. In particular, over the two-plus years of the pandemic, it was clear to us that you remain steadfastly determined to ensure that all of our students remained connected and didn't fall through the cracks. We are also appreciative for your approach to developing partnerships in the community. Too often, organizations such as school districts attempt to go it alone, and as a result, end up failing the very constituents they are charged with serving. You have reached out to us and numerous other organizations to get and give support, and as a community, we have grown stronger together as a result. We wish you luck and many blessings in your future endeavors, but please know that you have a very special place in our hearts here in Nashua. So is it okay if Dr. McKinney comes up? Presented to Dr. Garth McKinney, June 6, 2022, for your years of dedicated and passionate support of the students and families of Nashua, from the Rotary Clubs of Nashua, the Nashua School District, the Adult Learning Center, the United Way of Greater Nashua. So why don't we get in the middle of that? I have to get a picture from Mike. Yes.
One Dr. McKinney.
Yes. Don't be cutting anyone's heads out.
I'm going to get you the, I'll get you the...
The letter and the box, too.
For what? That was nice. That Appleberg is... You sick?
Oh.
Aren't they horrible?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for coming. We've been coordinating this for, it feels like, weeks now. Thank you. Okay, so I have, nobody else signed up for public comments, so next on our list is to approve the Nashua Association of School Principals' Collective Bargaining Agreement. I'm assuming we have some questions in regards to this, so I would be looking to go into a non-public so that we can address them properly.
So moved?
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Two, two questions. We'll have to come back out for a vote, right? Will we need a non-public for the public complaint as well? Are we planning on going in, out for a vote, and then back in?
Yeah. No, let's do them all at the same time and then come back in. Let's do them both at the same time. And then come out and vote.
Can I ask a question? Before we do that, do you want to do any board member comments to end the meeting? And then we'll do the non-public.
So the thing with the bargaining agreement is we do have to come into public, and I wanted to keep Jimmy here for it, so I was hoping the non-public would be as brief as we can make it. So I was, I know, I do.
Do we have, can I ask, do people have questions, or do they feel?
I'm honestly just assuming Ms. Johnson has questions.
I'm sorry, I apologize to everybody, but I was busy writing down that it's under RSA 91832E, and I missed the motion makers.
Ms. Seem and Ms. Darling.
Okay.
Mr. Donovan?
You know, a lot of times, unless the questions are related to specific individuals, a lot of the questions can be asked publicly.
Yes, I would think so.
On a, on a contract. Keep in mind, I then go off after this to the Board of Aldermen, and I give a little summary, that's in public, so unless the questions are about a specific person...
Can you give us the same one you gave them, quickly?
Well, I haven't given them one yet.
Oh, you haven't?
You get it first.
It has to come here first. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. If I may make a suggestion, let's stay in public unless there's a question that Mr. Donovan feels is inappropriate, if people would be comfortable with that.
Okay. Okay. We'll wing it. Please be good. Okay, so we won't go into non-public about the contract until we need to.
Yes.
Ms. Johnson, the floor is yours.
No, I just wanted Mr. Donovan to kind of give everybody an overview Yes. of the contract.
All right, I'll give a quick summary. This is the contract with the Principals' Union. They voted, I believe, last week to approve the contract. It's a four-year contract covering the next four school years, so there's no retroactive portion to this. The salary increases over the four years are 3.6, 3.4, 3.8, 3.7. The Principals have a grid like the teachers do. The group that will get the highest raises are the Assistant Principals at the elementary, with the intent of the, of the Principals was to try to get those people up close to where the teachers are going to be with their new contract, so senior teachers and the elementary Assistant Principals will be close in pay. So they got a slightly larger increase as individuals, and the rest of the group was about 3%. There's a small change to the tuition reimbursement, where they were receiving for an individual course $1,000, now that's up to $2,000. And if they're taking a series of courses, they can, instead of getting the max of $1,750 a year, it's up to $3,000. And along with that, they would give a two-year commitment to stay with the district. We also got the newly hired Assistant Elementary Principals, we'll start paying them in September instead of in July, which will protect us because they don't really work until mid-August. So if an elementary principal were to leave at the end of July, they would owe us a lot of money. This sort of gets rid of that problem for the new hires. For the existing ones, we didn't want to make them wait two months to get their next paycheck. They have agreed to the new city medical plan, as all the other unions are, have, and other than that, there's some clarifying language around longevity and things like that. But those are the highlights, there aren't a lot of changes. Like I said, it was mostly agreed to the medical and adjusted their grid, and it's a four-year contract. And the costing sheet was late, I did hand it out tonight. I had most of it filled out, but I need to go to the city to get the changes in the medical, so any savings we're getting by the unions taking the new medical plan, I don't know what those are, I need to wait. So it was a little late in getting that, but, and if you look at the, you can see that it will be effective with the July of 2023, because this won't be approved and the open enrollment is already over. So you'll see that the savings occur in the second year of the contract. Any questions?
So, so, so you can live with this?
Yes.
Ms. Darling? I was going to ask that question, but, so if somebody were to leave before their two years is up, do we go after them for something? How does that work?
For the tuition, we would request a return of a, or a portion of it. So let's say if they were a year and a half through the two years, we may just ask for a quarter of it, but...
Okay.
If they would have finished the course and then immediately leave, we'd request a return of the full amount of the tuition.
All right, thank you. Ms., actually, before we continue on, just housekeeping, Ms. Seem, are you withdrawing your motion to go into non-public?
Oh, yes, I guess so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That was it. Ms. Lampier?
I have a question about the tuition reimbursement as well. You said that there's a two-year, they have to stay for two years, commit to that. Is that, has that been the policy before, or has it been less time, or was there no policy?
No, that's new language that we added this year. It was in the teacher's contract, so they wanted to sort of get the same kind of amounts that the teachers got, so we said, fine, if you agree to that commitment, then we'll increase the amounts, which they did.
Oh, so previously, there was no commitment that had to be made?
Not for the Principals.
Okay, thank you. That's a good change, I like that.
Ms. Seem?
So to go back to my, to go back to, so the third year, I'm sure you know now what we're looking at in that year? Have you had indigestion over that?
No. I, you know, if in the third year, we get a, you know, the mayor comes and says it's a 1.8% increase, then yeah, I'll get indigestion at that point, but, you know, right now, I think this is in line with, with the other contracts we've done.
Definitely.
And, you know, this group, it's only 40, 41 people, so if the attrition can potentially save some money, so if a couple of the more senior people leave and you bring in more junior people, you'll save money there.
Thank you.
Okay. I was just imagining when you said indigestion, instead of a chocolate fountain, just like Pepto Bismol, like one of those fountains, you just... I find myself extremely entertaining.
Jimmy found you entertaining, too.
Yes, he's a good audience. Okay, so if we have no other comments or questions in regards to the contract, I would be looking for a motion to approve the Nashua Association of School Principals' Collective Bargaining Agreement.
So moved.
Ms. Gilio moved it, seconded by Ms. Darling. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
All right. We did it without a non-public.
And now we have to redo the non-public motion because we are not discussing...
Does this one require a public vote?
No.
In which case I would propose that we do board member comments and then end the meeting in non-public with this discussion.
Yeah, that's fine, and then we can excuse whoever doesn't need to be here. I will start off with board member comments on this side. Ms. Seem?
No. Everybody have great life. Thank, thank you.
Ms. Brown?
No, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Darling?
No comment.
Thank you. Ms. Raymond?
Oh, I have comments.
Uh-oh.
Just two things. This is our last full board meeting before school ends for the summer, so I just have a couple of community updates that people should know. The first one is that the Pennechuck Middle School entire grounds and building will be closed for the summer. You can't park there, you can't walk over the bridge to use the fields either as of the day after school ends, because we will be continuing construction to get things pushed to completion as much as we can before school starts. And there are going to be some parking updates for the fields there and for the football practice field that the Parks and Rec uses way in the back. And then the other important community update is that the summer lunch program is starting up again, beginning on, the last day of school is June 22nd. Kids, do kids get a bag lunch on June 22nd? I don't remember, but June 23rd starts the summer lunch program. From the 23rd to the 30th, Amherst Street, Led Street, Mount Pleasant, Fairgrounds, Dr. Crisp, and Elm Street will all have grab-and-go lunches for kids who need them. And then, starting in July, lunches will move to the library, the soup kitchen, and Centennial Pool for the rest of summer, for any student under, well, student, any person under the age of 18 who needs one, no questions asked. So we want to make sure that none of our community's children go hungry this summer. So send your kids down to the library or the pool over the summer to get their lunches.
Ms. Gilio? Oh, no, you're next in line.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have no comment.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I just want to let everybody know that on May 27th, I attended the Memorial Day services like at Fairgrounds Middle School. And I will tell you, Sharon Coffey put... like at Fairgrounds Middle School, and I will tell you, Sharon Coffey put on a great performance with those kids. The band, the chorus, I got there a little bit late, only about five, 10 minutes, but they, it was just a wonderful ceremony that she put on, and it, I wish every school did this, to honor our veterans, our fallen veterans. But I ran into her in Market Basket, and I just said to her what a great morning that was. I was, I was the only one there from the school district. I kind of felt special, I guess. But she did an excellent job with those students, and she does an excellent job. I've known her for so many years, from when my middle son was at that school, and I can't say enough about her. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lampier?
So for 603 Day, my husband and I went to our first game of the Nashua Silver Knights, and it was really cool. There were so many little kids there, and they, they had a bouncy house and everything, the, the team played games with the, with the little kids on the field in between the changes of innings and stuff, so just wanted to put a word out there that if you have young kids and you're looking for something to do, it's a really fun time. So thanks.
Mr. Claffey?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, so I just have one. I believe it'll be, we have our last meeting of the, well, not the school year, but of June will be the 27th, and Mr. Sahu will not be here, but will that be your last meeting? Or do you guys come over the summer? I don't think you have to come over the summer.
So-
Unless you, like, really want to.
I'd love to come over the summer. But, but, but.
But you're going to be a kid this summer?
I am, I, I have some travel plans. I already told some of the board members and Dr. McKinney, I'll be participating in the United States Senate Page Program, so I will be in DC for most of the summer.
Ooh, yay.
Thank you.
Wow.
But, yeah, so I won't, so you probably won't see me too much, unless I'm somehow in town for a full board meeting. But I just wanted to say, since it's my last meeting before the school year ends, just want to say goodbye to Dr. McKinney. This will be our last meeting together. We've had lots of fond memories, going, going back and forth about what board, overstepping with administration, or class rank, and I've actually known Dr. McKinney since fifth grade, since when he was an assistant principal at Maine Dunstable, so it's very full circle. But yeah, so thank you, guys. I'll, if I don't see you in the summer, I'll be very excited to be back at it again in the fall.
Well, we appreciate all of, all of the work that you've put into this, and all of the research, and the stuff that you've written up, and, and the stances that you've taken. I think your, your courage and fortitude has certainly come through, and I think DC's going to be, be bruised when you come back from it.
That's the intent, thank you.
I hope he sets all those politicians straight.
I think he will. I think he will. We'll be down there for the fourth, I'm expecting the underground tour. Just kidding. But we thank you for all of your work with us, and we appreciate you being here and giving up so many nights and juggling so many things, which I think is very hard as a high schooler, but you'll get, you're, you're goodbye at the next meeting. But-
Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here.
You guys are stuck with me for now.
Yes, and we're fine with that. And I think, I don't have any other comments, but I appreciate everybody coming out and participating tonight, and we will be going into a non-public in two seconds, so on the vote to go, no, we have to start all over again.
I move to go into non-public under RSA 91A32A.
Second.
Okay, on the motion to go into non-public under RSA-
91-
91-
A3-
3-
2A.
2A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, no, it has to be roll call. Ms. Darling?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Gilio?
Aye.
I'm a yes. Ms. Lampier?
Aye.
Ms. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Seem?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
And Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, and it is 8:59?
7:59.
Oh, 7:59, that's fantastic.
Yes.